Order thirty dash twenty-five. An order for appropriations in tax rates proposed in 2046, Muncie zero one.
Make a motion to adjutant.
The motion is made by councilman. I'll second it by councilman.
I have a motion to amend the budget. So that each councilperson got a list of three reductions that the finance committee kind of agreed on. Those were all suggested by their department heads, and they were issues within the budget. I won't read off the line items. You have it in front of you, sir. The clerk, but it's the controller for overtime, a reduction of forty-eight thousand dollars. It was just an error. Proposed was fifty-three thousand, three fifty-two, and the new total was five thousand, three hundred and fifty-two. Local roads and streets, the line item is there. Other services and charges proposed is a million, reduced is a million, new total is zero. That's because that was a duplicate, and that's the exact same line item is in the budget twice. And then again, local roads and streets, the line item is there. Traffic and projects, proposed amount is five hundred thousand, reduction is five hundred thousand, new total is zero, and again, not because it was a duplicate and the exact same line item is there. So those three reductions were things that the finance committee agreed upon at our last meeting. So I would like to make a motion from the finance committee for those three reductions.
What do you mean it was agreed upon?
Those are the three.
We brought up for discussion. I don't know if we agreed upon.
Okay, well, then let's have some.
Yeah, but you said it was agreed upon, and it was not agreed upon. We had that as a discussion.
These were suggested by the department heads as reductions that they suggested.
They suggested.
Okay. So do you have an objection to those reductions that the department heads suggested?
Well, we have a motion.
Yes, okay, okay.
Wrongly, yes.
Hold your second.
I make a motion.
The motion was made by councilman. I'll second it by councilman. McIntosh.
Mayor, right now, or I have some things I just want to go over and reference to this budget.
Can we stay on this motion, though, sir? This specific motion to amend?
And that motion was for?
For the three line items that were suggested by the department heads, the controller to reduce the error in overtime and local roads and streets.
Yeah, we'll let you finish that.
Thank you.
We'll call him.
We'll call him, Mr. President.
Question?
Question.
I call a question.
Go ahead.
We'll call him, Mr. President.
Dishman?
Yes.
Selby?
What are we voting on again?
The three line items that were suggested by the department heads.
Go ahead. Garrett?
Yep.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Basham?
No.
Powell?
Yes.
Green?
No.
Mason?
Yes.
I also want to make a motion to amend the budget to remove funds for a couple of line items that we had already removed last year. That would be one oh one oh four dash four one one oh one one three, and one zero one two two dash four one 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 six two. Again, they've been removed from the last year's general fund, and I don't see really reason to move them back into this year.
I'll second that.
The motion is made. Seconded by councilman.
Call question.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Basham?
No.
Green?
No.
McIntosh?
Why was that not allowed?
Questions.
Questions. McIntosh, yes. Dishman?
No.
Garrett?
No.
Selby?
No.
Powell?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion, given the email correspondence from the mayor, to free up money in the general fund for raises. I will not read off the line items, but I do have these available for councilpersons. My motion is to remove the four percent raises, just from the department heads. To the controller would be a reduction of twenty-six eighty-four. The deputy controller would be a reduction of twenty-four ten. The animal shelter would be a reduction of twenty-four forty-six. Beach Grove would be a reduction of eleven seventy-four. Building Commissioner would be twenty-four thirty-five. Channel sixty would be a reduction of twenty-fourteen. EMS chief would be a reduction of fifteen fifty-nine. Human rights would be a reduction of four thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars. Parks would be a reduction of twenty-six eighty-three. Personnel would be a reduction of twenty-five seventy. PCR superintendent would be a reduction of twenty-two fifty-two. There is no salary listed for the street superintendent or the city engineer, so I'm not sure what that reduction would be. The police and fire are protected by their unions, so those would be left alone. It would be a total savings of twenty-six six sixty-eight. That my motion is to reduce those department heads who've received twenty-one percent raises in the past four years to free up money for the general fund.
Second. The motion is made. Seconded. Question?
No.
Selby?
No.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Green?
No.
Powell?
Yes.
Garrett?
No.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Basham?
No.
Mason?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have another motion to amend. Because I would never ask for employees to do anything that I would not expect of myself, I want to make a motion that see council raises before the raises are eliminated. The total would go from one thirty-five three oh eight to one thirty-one oh four.
I'll second that.
The motion is made. Seconded. Amended. Raises.
City council, yes.
City council raises.
Question, please.
We'll call.
Green?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Basham?
Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Go ahead. Selby?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Nine.
The motion to adopt?
A motion to adopt is amended.
Amended.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion for an amendment to the budget.
The green has made a motion to amend. The budget is seconded.
My second.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion for an amendment to the budget.
The green has made a motion to amend. The budget is seconded.
The house, Mr. Commissioner. Second.
The item one oh one oh four, four one one six zero, the overtime, it's already been mentioned, to reduce that by forty-eight thousand dollars. Item one oh one dash one eight, four one one oh one nine, the reduction of that would be fifty-one thousand, one hundred dollars. New balance would be zero.
Can you give the line? Mr. President, can Mr. Green, if you explain what the description of that second?
The second one is civil rights investigator. This particular office has been ran by a year and a half by one individual, not two. We're not touching anything else within that office. Training funds are still there, but one individual's shown that they can do that, so we'd like to reduce that down to zero. City controller is the overtime budget.
But it's like the overtime budget with controllers already.
Yes.
Okay, so this amendment would just be the second item that he mentioned?
Yeah.
Okay.
Civil rights.
Civil rights.
Hold on, has it been seconded to that motion?
Seconded. The motion is made.
I don't feel like we should change the makeup of the office without input from the civil rights commission, the board. The board isn't present to make that recommendation. I feel it's reckless to change the makeup of the department without the board's input.
Okay, so I'm going to add to that, that I have been in discussion with some of the board members. They are hiring a new, they are in the process of, you know, looking for a new director, and they are working on changing the job descriptions. And they probably will include that position, that investigation being part of the human rights commission being the person. I just want to let you know that if you are a commissioner on the human rights board, you have investigative rights, too. So the board members can help in that process as well. Third thing that I'd like to add, that whenever there's a complaint about the housing, it needs to go, it will go straight to the state, and the state will investigate it and report to them. So those issues will be handled in more than one.
Yeah, I'm going to say we don't know that this has not changed. All we know is we're having to retire at the end of the year. We don't know what that is going to look like. There may be discussions, but we don't know. So I think this is irresponsible to just cut. That's the sake of cutting.
Mr. President? Yes, sir. Yeah. Councilwoman Selby, you served as president on that, and you say that you have been in contact with the board members.
Certain board members, yes. Because I have been.
Do you know how long that position has gone unfilled?
And it was proper, I mean, it's not the person that was in that position had the right to not be there. I mean, it was, you know, not a, but it was unfilled, I would say, at least even a half to. And then the board and the director took the responsibilities on.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Just to make sure I'm understanding this, did my family come?
No, it's not. They aren't anywhere.
Oh, he's doing that. I don't want to. Who served as the investigator?
Oh, I don't recall her name. It was just investigator for housing. It was just, just for housing. The director is the main chief investigator. The president of the human rights commission and other members do that. They have every right to call somebody in, to question them. So if you are called in, Mr. Mason, you have to show up, you have to answer the question, and the board members, with the board president, with the director, you know, to do all that investigating. And then everything that they discussed has to go to the director.
Mr. President, very quick, I'm just keeping this forward. Are you on the board now?
No.
Are any commission members here suggesting or recommending that we cut a higher position from the department?
No. But did they reach out to you and tell you they didn't, they recommend not to cut? Did you reach out to them?
Then, then, no, they did not. So I think that therefore we should leave it alone until they sound off on whether to cut it or not. It's irresponsible, if you vote, to cut a position within this department without the input of me. Mr. President? I'll talk. I'm also just going to say it. It's also irresponsible when we know how many other kinds of protections are going away for people right now, and to make this, make it even more difficult for people to have a place to go for complaints. I think it's sickening.
How much was the reduction by?
Fifty-one thousand, one hundred dollars.
Fifty-one thousand dollars, and we're going off of anecdotal information from, you said plural, so that means more than one, but doesn't, which how many members are in the council?
Say that again.
How many members are in the, this is right.
Nine.
So maybe two of nine people talked to you.
I approached, yes.
You, okay, so you approached them. Two of nine people, maybe, because we don't know how many, because you just said people, for fifty-one thousand dollars, and you all just voted no to reduce one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars from the three positions that weren't on the budget last year, correct? Am I understanding this right? Because it doesn't make sense to me, why are we going after this one position that helps people, civil rights, on the word of somebody, for two people, as much as I love you, Rob, it's two people, and it's true, no, it's your word versus nobody here to back it up, and we're going to give, cut fifty-one thousand dollars for that, when there's one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars that are added to the budget that we have to make up for now? This does, is not only reckless in the service of Muncie, it's reckless at the budget of a financial institution. Thank you. Mr. President, remind me again, how long has it been since somebody has had this job?
You say that you're in half.
How long has it been since someone has served in this job? Eighteen months, I heard you say.
Okay.
Yes.
At least a year and a half. I'm not going to go, you know, record, because I, you said it's been at least a year and a half.
I want clarification on that question. So you said that somebody wasn't in that job, but you said earlier that they had a reason to fall.
And they.
So they were off. So how long have they been away from that job, that that job has not been filled? Not how long has that person been off for verified and excuse reasons, but how long is that position been?
I'll say over here.
Over here. Don't you think it would be best to wait on this decision, that it could be made at any time, and if the commission wants to come before council at a later time, they can request to reduce the funding in their department? I, I think that that would be more responsible.
With, with the investigator from the housing, is this not all of this that they, it wasn't the housing and complaint that we can therefore turn, knock to the state, our building commissioner's office, with the unsafe, any unsafe housing?
I don't think so.
So there's no unsafe housing?
I think this is more like, I think it touches like unfair racial housing.
Okay.
So it's not the same, no.
Okay.
I can't say it is.
So we're, you keep saying it's civil rights, it's human rights.
It's human.
And as a former board member, only human rights commission, just because it was a year and a half, I've had an investigator, don't mean it was an undue burden on the director, not saying they didn't, they didn't, they just went there. And this year and a half thing. So this administration turned office, how many deputy police chiefs worked? Anybody tell me? Does anybody remember? Was it one, two?
When we came in, there were two.
Okay, two deputy chiefs?
Well, when we came in, there were two. Now, so.
So before that, eight years prior, there was just one.
You should know.
So you, you, you're saying we want to add a position, they added a position when years before we just one, they could come in and add two. So you add a position that you've done without, and now you want to take away a position that you've done without for a year and a half. It doesn't make sense. So why don't you use that logic when you're trying to take away a position? They've done away with it a year and a half, where they had one deputy police chief for eight years, eight years, and then you add one all of a sudden out of the group. Not saying that it was a bad thing, I'm just using your logic. So why don't you take that into consideration? Maybe the person that was doing the job, it was too much for them, and they said, look, we need to keep this job on the bus instead of just wiping it out. Doesn't make sense. Once again, not saying that having two deputy police chiefs is a bad thing, if you didn't use that logic, you wanted to add one, the fact that they've only had one, and they operated one, when they decided to put two. Thank you. I have to say something.
Hi there, my name is Patty Goddard. I am speaking as the director of human resources. I would just like to share some direct information that I have, so that you could have more information. I'm not going to speak on behalf of the human rights commission. I'm simply going to tell you my direct knowledge, okay? My direct knowledge is that position has been vacant for more than a year and a half, more, close to two years. It has not been filled, nor posted, nor approved after multiple requests to the human rights commission to post that position. I made those requests myself and was denied multiple times, both by the executive director and the human rights commission. That being said, I also had the pleasure and opportunity to sit with the human rights commission members, a subcommittee, to develop a job description for the existing executive director role. During that discussion, I can only share what was discussed, nothing has been decided, but during that discussion, the discussion was indeed to eliminate the EEO investigator. I was part of that discussion, not part of the decision, it's not been made, I want to be very clear about that. But I do have firsthand knowledge, and I wanted to share that with you all. I do have awareness of how well that position has been vacant, how many times I have offered to post it. It has not been posted because they have not wanted to build the position, the commission.
Thank you.
Is there a reason that they haven't sent us some kind of email or reach out, or they're here talking about themselves? I'm not, that's kind, I doubt they know that.
It's a good question, Sarah. I don't know. I'm just telling you, I'm sorry, councilwoman Gillian, I want to be respectful. I don't know why they're not here. I know they don't prepare the budget, that's prepared by the executive director, I do know that, and she has now retired. So that may be why they're not here.
She hasn't retired yet.
Yes.
She's, I mean, she's retired, but she's still in the position, correct?
As of tomorrow, that's, tomorrow is her final day, ma'am. I have the notification from the employee herself.
So I'm going to thank you for, I know it was one year and a half, I didn't want to go, thank you for that. The other thing I just want to let you know, that the way the laws are now, when a complaint comes to the human rights commission about housing discrimination, that has nothing to do with the law coming, it could be the quality of the house, blah, 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 but this is discrimination based on gender, based on race, it has to go straight to the state, and the state has to get involved right away. So when they receive it, they need to send it to the state, and the state decides, not the Muncie human rights commission. When it comes to gender, to sexual, you know me, and racial, yes, the racial stuff has to go to the state, which is more powerful than, I like.
But you're, I'm going to ask you.
Go ahead.
But that's only with housing, that's not talking about the other issues.
But that job, exactly, but that position is just for housing. If you look at the description of that position, it is for housing, E O C, housing. It is not described for anything else. And Ms. Goddard, I'm sorry, may I? Ms. Burst, Ms. Goddard, human rights, can you come up, please? Could you, could you tell me if I'm correct or not correct, that that position deals with housing? And that human rights director deals with everything else?
Absolutely. We reviewed both job descriptions at the time of our job description committee reviewing, and yes, the investigator, yes, to do with housing. Do I know what they specifically do? No, I do not. I have reviewed the job description along with the executive director. And their intent was to move components, again, this is the committee that I worked with, with a member, four member committee, to include myself, of the nine, and they were moving things from EEO investigator forward to the executive director. That's my understanding.
So, Ms. Goddard, just so I, I understand what you said, you said that you have met with the commission members, that you discussed, and you know for a fact that that position hasn't been filled for at least a year and a half, but you also said that no decision was made, so they have not made a decision on what they want to do with that position yet.
Absolutely correct. No decision, I have not convened any decisions.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just confirming what you said, that they have not made a decision on whether they want to eliminate that position.
That is correct. They don't meet until Monday, I'm aware of that, because the job description will be reviewed at that point.
Thank you.
Mr. President? But, Ms. Goddard? But I did hear you say that the conversation from the commission indicated that they intended to eliminate that position.
Of the board member committee that I met with, yes, that was the conversation.
And how many?
Nine.
So you met with less than four?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it wasn't an executive session that would have had the public notice, you know, all of that.
How long was it written that the investigator just dealt with housing?
Oh, I'm sorry? I didn't understand or hear.
How long, how long was it written since, since the investigator only dealt with housing?
I will tell you that that job description, I can tell you, the last it was edited, and it was in the early two thousands, it has not been updated since then. That's actually true of many of the job descriptions for the city, that's how I'm able to come up with that so easily, because a lot of the job descriptions are being revised currently. And so I know in my year and a half here, that position has not been filled, and I have repeatedly requested to fill that position, knowing that it was a vacant position, and it has been declined, both through the commission and through the executive director.
Thank you.
Okay, the meeting's been brought back to order. I apologize, you are our viewing audience, we're having some technical difficulties with our sound, hopefully we'll be rectified before the meeting is over. Again, we apologize.
I just want to add real quick, like, I really feel like this is a bad argument to, it's a bad premise, that like, because of something that we haven't used a long time, that we don't need it, because how many years did we go without having a deputy mayor? But now we're adding that back to the budget, so I feel like we're saying two different things.
Just for the record, that we're not putting deputy mayor back in the budget, nobody's, they can ask for it, and we're not doing it.
Sorry, my bad, I thought those were part of the three that got added back in. Okay, I misunderstood that one. But we still, there was still that argument made, that like, we need a deputy mayor when we went so long without.
My council, surely it's changed since Muncie. This council has always been very open and very affirming to communities in this town, just in the last ten years. I don't need to go down the list of things that this council has supported. I just want to say, and I hear you, that we're going to rely on the state of Indiana to support, if need be, what this position would do. And I'm just going to say, in the current climate that we are in, in the state of Indiana, that gives me no assurance whatsoever. Thank you.
And to follow up on that, I don't know anything about this new, you know, that that's supposed to go straight to the, to the state or whatever, I mean, I believe what you're saying, but again, how am I going to vote on something when I don't even, I've not even seen the information on it?
Hi, John Oliver. So the person's retired that was in that position, we're Muncie, how are we going to draw someone that's really qualified for that position? How are we going to train someone with no one in that position to train anyone? I mean, we've really got to think this one through, guys. Really do. Thank you.
What else? All right, I'll come back up. I'm going to do this before anything happens, where like, this is all part of the budget. So like, I'm still trying to figure, wrap my head around, I have been going through pages and pages of what little there is of the budget, and we've, I've heard people talk, I've heard you all talk, and I know we're all here to do what is best to, to get to the budget and to present information, and we're not able to find that information, and that's a problem. And I want to make sure, like, I'm not here to rattle rounds, I'm not here to rail against Republicans or anything like that. I don't want you guys to have all the information, because that's your job. You chose to do that for what, for a reason, but the, because it's not easy, but you should have all the information. the information that you need, and you're not able to get it, at least to my knowledge, not that I've seen, not that I've been able to find on Facebook or the Udoc or the Muncy Facebook or the Muncy website. I even went to the DLGF and there's nothing there. So what, trying to find this information out is like pulling teeth. I know we've had, what, it got brought up in September, and it's now mid-October, and we're still not able to get that information. But I have questions about, like, how is it that a day after the mayor submitted, like, stood out there on the steps and says, we've got $1.4 million, but we're not getting it. And then, we're going to raise, we've got raises coming up, we've got positions that we're adding back, like I said, $178,000, that y'all voted no to keep them out. So we're adding those in, $178,000. You took, what, $500,000 of opioid money to cover this year's budget, and we're losing $1.4 million. And this administration is not, I have not found any evidence to find that they are providing all the information to you that you need. I have a number of questions regarding the insurance. I brought them up last, during the meeting, to where I have real concerns for our employees, to where I wouldn't want to be in their position to find out after the fact of what my insurance covers. Like, why can't we get that information before we, like, I know that there's been emails that go back and forth, saying, hey, we've got this, we've got that, but has the information actually been presented into the council? Like, it's not anywhere. Maybe it's something I'm not privy to as a citizen, but I feel like the council should have that. And I feel like you all know that you should have that. And the fact that you are not fighting for those things, and I know, I'm here not everywhere, but the fact that we're not fighting to get those things, and before we take any kind of vote, before we make any kind of amendments, to make sure we've got money to cover, to say no to adding these things, to, whether or not we need to take more than $1.4 million. It's a real struggle for me to understand. I mean, even looking at some of the documents, we had, like, point of, what was it, Form 4B, we had $1.6 million in the general funds for June of 2025. At the end of 2026, we're gonna have $432,000, which means we're eating into our savings. I don't, like, the people, if you have things to say, there are Facebook, you just put stuff out on.
I'm gonna call, pull you over here, just.
That's fine.
Cameron, but I believe.
Nope, you're fine.
We're kind of off topic.
Yep.
Thank you.
I want to make sure that got said.
I'd like to call a question.
This is just on the amendment, just to be clear.
Who's amendment?
Jeff Green.
Okay, Selby?
Yes.
Powell?
No.
Gillian?
No.
Garrett?
Yeah.
Basham?
Yes.
McIntosh?
No.
Dishman?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Mason?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 3025 as amended, as amended.
I second that.
Motion made by Councilman Basham, second by Councilman Selby. Discretion.
If you're paying your bills with your savings, you're not making good financial decisions. The controller brought up Form 4B, saying that it was a positive net balance, and that is true. But it's because, when you look at Form 4B, you see that we are using $1.2 million of our general fund savings. This is not a sustainable budget. And, and when you're paying your bills with your savings, you're not making good financial decisions.
Dan Riordan, Mayor of Muncy. I, first of all, want to say, we are all on the same team. Supposed to. We're all on the same team. And we should be working for the city of Muncy. I'm gonna go through a couple of ways of where we treated people with respect. And, and then I'm going through a couple of instances that show that I feel that things have gotten extremely political. And your last statements, Ms. Powell, is why I'm bringing this up. I had decide, I had planned on doing it, and then I decided, no, if they're gonna approve the budget, I'm fine. But I'm just gonna go ahead and bring it up. When Nora Powell, the Finance Chair last year, and this year, but last year, made an addition mistake on the budget in 2025, she came to us and she said, would you please make these employees whole? And we did that. We did fix it. We didn't make a social media case out of it. We did not shame, we did not post, we did no fanfare, we did none of that. We did this quietly and internally. And I don't always agree with Nora, but I know we're on the same team. And so that's why we did that. We treated her like a teammate. In 2024, Councilmember Mason came to me, and he said he had some things he would like to do for Highland Avenue. We had a couple conversations, then we had a meeting at MCL with him and three other people from the neighborhood, and I then funded some of those improvements there that he had been recommending. So it was communication. I funded those, not because we agree on everything, but because we're teammates, and it made sense to me. In February 24, because we had a number of new council members, we started a monthly meeting. This monthly meeting is with three council members each month, because we don't want to go over any quorum violations. So three council members, and it rotates each and every month. So everybody has the opportunity to come at least once every quarter. We wanted, we want to provide information on what's going on with streets, with budget, with all kinds, with all kinds of things, future developments, things we're working on, things we're working toward, what we're hoping for. And then I opened it up to the council for their ideas, their thoughts and challenges. And quite frankly, Jerry usually brings me a list of, a printed out list of items he wants me to look into. But Jerry has been communicating, regardless of what political party he had been communicating. What was, what's interesting to know, and that I want the public to know at this time, there are nine council members here. And only one, Councilperson Powell, has never attended one of those particular meetings.
I did, on December 19th.
And at, twice at your request, we changed to accommodate times, and you still didn't attend. In fact, there's no other council member that has attended less than two. Multiple of both parties have attended five of the seven opportunities. Had you been to your meeting, which was scheduled for September 18th, you could have asked all those questions that you put in an email at 9:30 PM to us, which we would have answered the next day. However, not treating us like teammates, you put it on social media and start putting all kinds of comments out there. Now, I know you've been a Finance Chair multiple times, both with this council and in your previous term. So we'll, we'll talk about that. We made a decision at that point, that if you were gonna do things in a public fashion, that we wanted to do things in a public fashion. So that's why I'm gonna bring this up here right now. And we're gonna answer some of those questions that were on your email.
Thank you.
You claim that there's a deficit of 1.2 million, or there will be at the end of, that we're spending 1.2 million by the end of the year 2026. But in your posts, and even in some of your emails, you give the reasons why that's not even accurate. And I'll, I'll tell you what a couple of those things are. Number one, apparently, you did not realize that the unrestricted opioid funds had not been moved over to the general fund yet. That's $526,072. It was, had not been over by, moved over by June 30th, so it wasn't part of the numbers used by the DLGF. And it was not, had not been moved over to the general fund in August, when we submitted the budget that was then available to all of you for the September council meeting. That alone takes care of $500,000, and $526,072. That has been done. And I have the documentation here that that has now been done. But it was not part, but it was mentioned multiple times in your posts that this money was in there. Oh, yes, it was. Another, another item you failed to add into it is the edit funds. Now, you say that the edit funds are gonna be used to shore up this budget, but you conveniently do not include that in your financial figures, implying that those $900,000 are in there. This is actually the form that will be submitted on January 1st of '26. I can't put those monies in until '26. So you add that $900,000 plus the $500,000 plus, and suddenly, what you're claiming is a minus 1.2, and poor financial management, is suddenly plus $300,000. But there are other things. There were other cuts today, $48,000 for one, $51,000, and not everybody agreed on some other ones that you attempted to do. But there are all kinds of other things there. But also, if you look at the budget that you each had in August, when we submitted it, and was on the September agenda, you'll find that this, last year's interest budget was for $500,000. This year, we only put $400,000. But we've already, through September, already have over $400,000. We cut that short, being conservative, being careful, being cognizant of this council, being cognizant of what our responsibilities are to the city. There's about $200,000, $222,000 is what we anticipate on top of the 400 that we will get in that. In addition, the lit income is another piece. This lit income, in 2024, if you look at your previous budget, you look at your current budget, we did generate over $5.8 million. We budgeted $6.281 million for this year, but we're actually on pace to earn about $600, $6.5 million, which means another $300,000. So you add that $300,000 to the mix as well, and then suddenly you're up to $1.974 million, which means instead of a negative $1.2 million, you're probably more in the $1.9 million for this. Another thing that you continue to bring up is you do estimates, and your estimates are always not, well, just, they have not always been accurate. And I'm gonna quote you from your 2025 minutes, from the final budget meeting by this council for the 2025 budget, so this would have been last year. You said, and this is the quote, beginning operating balance should be $191,811, quote, and that would be on January 1st. That actual figure was $762,801. You were off a half million dollars in your estimate there. And there are many other instances. I'm not gonna go into all of them, because we have time. But there are many other instances where you put numbers out there without verification, or you conveniently leave out income sources, like the $900,000 worth of edit, that confuses people. You have audience members who are not fans of mine, who are saying, I can't understand what we're doing. Apparently, we're making that point, too. It's in the budget. It's right there. The other thing is, you like to talk, and I've seen it, you've mentioned it in finance meetings, and in other areas, that you talk about how this general, but, general fund budget of $2.9 million has been spent down by this mayor. That is accurate, but it's not the whole story, is it, Nora? The whole story is, when I took office January 1st, when I took office, let me finish.
Sure, thanks.
When I took office January 1st of 2020, there was $2.9 million, but there was also a negative $1,937,869 in the, the street fund. The year before, that was negative $430,995 in the street fund. The state required, this is what I got the joy of dealing with, when I took office, so I got the joy of dealing, that was negative the year before. And they said, unless we pay back that money, we won't get continued state funding. So what we did, we do, we paid that back. In addition to that, we paid over $1.8 million worth of claims for lawsuits and actions that occurred prior to my administration. I never made a public big deal about this. We did the right thing and we paid them off. These were actions that took place between 2015 and 2017. Now, fortunately, the statute of limitations has expired, and none of these, there, none of the previous actions, can there be any more lawsuits. We've paid them all, we've settled them all, some we've won, but it was $1.8 million. You add those things together, and I did, we started the year with $2.9, we ended '22 after paying off those negative balances with $163,119. We ended the year with '23, doubled it to $367,958. We ended '24, even though you said it was gonna be $119,000, $191,000, we ended up with $762,000. I think we're taking care of this financial budget. I'm very proud of what we've done to continue to provide the services that our citizens need, including four splash pads upgrades, the 10 other parks, a number of other services, and yet still, the cash flow balance is growing. Is it down from before? Yes. Is that something that was our, my responsibility? No. In fact, you were the Finance Chair on both of those instances where that street fund was negative.
What is your street fund now? Negative $213,000?
I don't have that in front of me.
I do.
In summary, this is the point. In summary, these political grants that you put out there is.
You have negative $213,000 in your street fund now.
And we have, do you have, do you know how the reimbursements work?
I do.
Do you?
I do.
With the Ready 1.0? Explain it to me. How does the Ready 1.0 funds work?
The street fund is reimbursed in the middle of the year.
Okay, so, so, and when will they receive that?
The Ready? I don't think that's, that's from you.
Well, exactly, exactly. And the year will not be negative. The reality is.
Hold on. But the information that I posted are from emails that you gave, from the DLGF documents that you're controlling and providing. Those are all that I use.
Those are, but you, do you not, either you don't understand the finances, or you're being a screener.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think we should work together. If you would come to the meetings, if others would come to meetings, some of the Democrats have been to five. You've come. I would recommend you come to those meetings. That's an opportunity. We continue to answer questions. We answered several today. But if you're gonna put things out on social media, we're gonna respond in the public.
I'm posting your emails, and information that I got from you verified through our DLGF field rep. And of course.
But before we were able to answer your, in the middle of the night email, because it was 9:30 PM, you posted it at 10:44 PM. I guarantee you, I was asleep, because I get up at 4:30 in the morning. So I was asleep.
Thank you. Please, Mr. President.
I appreciate the opportunity, but your estimates are often not accurate, and we are tired of it. We want to work together.
Thank you.
We want to do the good thing for the citizens. Thank you.
You're not gonna let the citizen speak?
You late?
Oh, yeah.
So late now. Can people make comment after that?
It's subject to appeal. So if somebody wants to, violent, make a motion, second and no honor.
I make a motion to appeal, and I think the public should have an opportunity to speak on it.
The motions that are made by Councilman Powell, second by Councilman.
Whether to continue to allow public comment.
A month and a half ago, there was a press conference out on the steps, and the mayor indicated that we were going to be short a million and a half roughly in property taxes. That's being one. At the same press conference, in light of that loss of funding, it was suggested that we will initiate an effort to have employees move from full-time to part-time. Because of the shortfall in funds, employees that would choose to do that would lose their benefits. Then we said we're going to change our insurance carrier that's going to save us approximately a million dollars. And on multiple occasions, this council requested proof from the insurance company. And I would like to show a thing. Did anybody get that proof from the insurance company? Or have all, the only proof we've gotten is a memo from this administration. Did anybody receive something from the insurance company verifying a million dollar savings? Anyone?
Well, we got an email. The information came from the insurance company, and it was central. Was that attached?
You got a graph.
So, so that was that graph, I think I saw.
Yes.
But that was not from the insurance company? No, it came from Mayor Riordan.
The email was not.
The email was not.
The email was not. The email was not. The attachment, I mean, the graph was from the insurance company. It wasn't numbers that came out.
Then we said at the same time, we're going to also take two positions that this council voted to unfund a year ago. And now we're going to fund them out of the general fund. We're going to grant additional raises, even to those individuals who already received raises or soon will via the opioid fund. That's a one-time thing. Raises are not. Those who pay every year. I guess what I'm saying is financial dots don't connect here. What we're hearing and what's being proposed don't connect. They make no sense. And just because we're allegedly saving money with health insurance doesn't mean we suddenly have that money to spend in other areas. I would encourage you to vote no.
Ms. Charlie's, I'll let...
Sorry.
Hi, Mr. Grubbs.
I just want to come up here and say that, you know, after listening to that, it's really disheartening because you make the claim that you're on the same team, but you're obviously not playing the same sport because there are different rules and there's information that could be passed along, like Charlie's just pulled up. The insurance, you know, seeing those changes made, and it's frustrating to watch this because while the mayor is sitting there saying that he's giving you information as he was walking away, I said, "Put the information out there", and he said, "We do". And then he changed it to, "I give it to you", which is mine. Like, I prefer it to be for the public, but for you guys. But obviously, that's not happening. When this budget got introduced in late August, which it could have been done sooner than that, but it got introduced in late August or September, you all had questions then. People had questions then. We've had at least six weeks to get answers provided by email through the channels. But instead, while claiming that this is political and everything like that gets up here in front of everybody else and from the dials to make accusations that can be found, funded, like founded or not. It's hard to say right now. And any information he just gave to you that you didn't know already, now you've got to take into consideration within minutes of making a vote. Information that should be at your fingertips, easily available, easily digestible. This is why we did this. I'm not here to discount whether or not what he's saying is true or correct. What I am for, what the people of Muncie are for, what all of us are for, is for information to be transparent and accessible. And we are tired of playing games. And I think you all should have that information. Just repeat what I've already said because there's so many numbers being moved around. So good luck on your decisions.
I'm very, very disappointed in what happened. I really would not say anything. I'm just so disappointed. You know, I really don't agree with the way it seemed like an attack that the mayor did on Ms. Powell. I really, I supported the mayor. I have a problem with the mayor. I've agreed with a lot of stuff he's done, but I don't agree with that attack you did, man. That was bad. That wasn't good at all. And, you know, I don't understand. Last year, those two positions that were cut were cut by two people that were Democrats. Then they turned Republicans and say, "Bring them back". And then the mayor saying, "Let's not play politics"? That's the definition of politics. You cut them as Democrats to go along with the Democrats. Then you bring them back as Republicans because you turn them Republican. That doesn't make sense. That doesn't make sense at all. And I got to say this. Rose Selby, I'm very disappointed in you, very. I supported you. I voted for you. And then you, only person up here, I got to give the rest of y'all credit. Y'all did want the public to speak. And then you say, people that are here to vote for you, you say, "I voted for you", and you tell them you don't want me to speak? That's, and then to sit here and just watch your facial expressions when you pout and you get mad. Because, I mean, I'm just going to say it, and it shouldn't be this way. Because of something that Democrats say. You lean back in your chair and you frown. And when it's something that Republicans say, you sit up and you smile like it's funny. I don't, you know, we should leave politics out of all of this. You know, bring back the days when you had Troy Hingem voting and he just so happens to vote the way the Democrats did. And they say, "Oh, he's not right". But then you say, "Let's not play politics". He wasn't playing politics. He was voting his conscience. But you called it politics either. I don't get it. I'm very disappointed. And to vote, to take away a position when you don't... When the Human Rights Commission presented their budget, they should have won, they should have been the one that said, "Look, we're going to present this budget, take away this position". That's the way it should have been. It shouldn't have come from nobody up here to suggest that without input from, I mean, when y'all vote, you got to have five out of four. To, I mean, okay, this is the last thing I'll say. To say that, have somebody come up here from the Human Rights and just say, "I've talked to a couple", and Rose Selby say, "I've talked to a couple", and then actually y'all go by and cut the budget down to one person. I'm just very disappointed in this council. I'm very disappointed in the way people are just switching up and playing politics. If you want to switch up, that's fine. Still vote your conscience. But the way you did it is just, it's obvious and a blind man can see. And I think the Ethics Commission should investigate why those two people switched anyway.
Christopher Bilbury. It's always strange when politicians, Republican or Democrat, gripe about playing politics. That's what this is. It shouldn't be that way, but that's what this is. You guys are people that ran. You're citizens of Muncie. The mayor's a citizen of Muncie. Some of you are Republicans, some of you are Democrats. Some of you don't know what you are. Okay? But the problem is, the thing that happens is, it's the same. It goes back and forth. It's a seesaw. We all know it. So to gripe about it and to act like we don't understand that it's going to happen is kind of ridiculous because it's just what happens. I feel like anybody that knows Counselor Powell and has known her for any length of time knows that she does a lot of work at night. I assume she works, I don't know what she does during the day. A lot of people have day jobs. But it's well-known that she emails late at night. And, you know, for the mayor to have a problem with something that she's posting on her social media, if he's got a problem with that, he has a whole team that can put out his other side of that. And so I think it's interesting that he's so caught up in the matter of, you know, doing it publicly. That's what we want. We want the mayor to do his job publicly. You know, blaming people for not coming to meetings or this person, okay, I get it. I mean, maybe he's right about that. Maybe he has a legitimate gripe and maybe she should go to those meetings. And her voters should be concerned about that. But to say, "Well, I'm not going to answer an email because I got it at 9:30 and I'm asleep at 9:30", what about all those next hours that next day? All those next hours, that next 24 hours that he could have answered? Any one of you, he could have sent those answers out. And to clarify, and I want to make sure the record is correct. The graph that was sent out was, it does appear to be an insurance graph that was sent by the administration to you guys. So you did get that little piece of graph. My gripe about this whole thing has been, if that's the only thing that the administration has made their decision on, that's something that should bother the public, that should bother you. There has to be more documentation. And when the question has been, "Did you guys get what you requested by the deadline?" And the council saying, "No, we didn't get it". My, you're here. Did you get what you requested in that meeting? Did you get everything that you thought you needed to make the decision on insurance? Did you get that? Did you get it, Row?
I got the stuff from the...
You got the stuff? Or you got the, you got the one single graph, right? Jerry, did you get more than that graph? You just got the graph. Any of you ever receive your insurance? My grandparents are elderly and I help them on their paperwork and all this stuff. They routinely get envelopes of insurance information that's 20, 30, 40, 50 pages each for both one of them. There's no way the city of Muncie is basing their change on one graph. So I would call it, you guys asked for something and there were Republicans and Democrats that asked for that at that meeting. Both Republicans and Democrats. And I don't know all of you, but I can say specifically, I know that Counselor Garrett asked for it and he's on, he's batting on the other side now. Okay, so he did ask for it. And I believe, I believe that Counselor Basham kind of spoke up and asked that he wanted it. So if the mayor didn't provide that, there's no excuse to not provide it. This is his budget. This is his budget that he wants you guys to do. He wants you guys to be on the same team. And it's easy for him to hold all of his cards back and say, "Well, you know, we're mad that this person didn't come to a daytime meeting. Maybe somebody was at work". You know, that happens. Maybe it's okay to do it in the public. It's okay for him to come here in the public. And when he doesn't attend all of the Finance Committee meetings and he says, "Well, if I was invited, maybe, you know, I would have came there and answered all of the questions". Again, I said at last meeting, he shouldn't need an invitation to attend every meeting that he needs, that should be here. And I understand that he has vacations and things like this. So if he can't be here, he needs to send somebody in his stead. And when he does, this is, okay, I will hear in just one second. I'm just telling you because this is a really big deal. This is the most big decision you guys make all year. This is the single most important decision you guys make. So I too want to share my disappointment with Counselor Dishman and Counselor Garrett because you guys should be asked every day from this point forward, "Were you lying last year when you defunded Amber Green and the deputy mayor and Matt Weggley? Or are you lying now when you voted to fund them?". One of them's right. What, can I ask you what the switch was? Can I ask you that?
For these jobs?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So have you not seen, I, me personally, let's say me. I can't speak for Derek, I can't speak for me. And I always speak, it might be wrong, but what I say is how I feel, okay? I see Amber Green out. I see Amber Green posting all the time, out, doing what she needs to do. Positive, working for the city. We need people to come to us, to come here, jobs to come here. Posting online like she does daily, constantly. Out and about, and she was, I saw Amber at my skate park opening with Mrs. Selby. Row, you were there too. You were there too in the skate park. No, sorry, no, we're sorry. And Nora too was there. And she posted daily. So it's positive, positivity. We need that. I think she earned that. Matt has been up here numerous times speaking. A lot of times, we go to Matt. I've called Matt. I've got questions from Matt. Has anybody else up here called Matt? Got questions in from Matt? So I think he earned that.
Did they, did they not earn that last year?
Last year?
Yeah. When you voted to unfund them last year?
Yeah, when I voted to unfund them last year, yes. Can, are you not allowed, who's ever changed their mind?
Okay, all right. I just, so I just wanted to make sure.
I'm not going to not talk to you.
Sure.
But let's keep this on task.
We're on task, sir. This is the budget that we're talking about.
Well, let's talk about the budget.
Okay, so the budget is, you've got two people that voted differently than they did last year on the same topic. Okay, I'm just trying to understand that. Because remember, we're, we can't say we're going to play politics. We're not going to play politics. Right now, it's politics. So we're trying to decide what that is. So I just, I just want to make sure. So we changed your mind. It wasn't a political decision. So that's, that's very good.
And there's no, I don't, there's no political decision in it.
Okay, okay.
This is speaking for me.
Okay. And look, I agree. I'm not saying anything negative about Ms. Green, Mrs. Green.
No, you did, you did not.
Yeah, yeah, no. I just want to make sure that that's clear. Or Mr. Weggley or Russum. And I also want to point out real quick that they weren't being unfunded because they have been paid this whole year. My question is, because it wasn't like these people were going to be out of a job tomorrow, he would have funded them by Edit again. So it's just a question of like, you know, that's, I think it's semantics and that's what scares me. So just FYI.
Okay, real quick, I just, I got sidetracked by the grandstanding earlier. And so I wanted to ask, how is it that we are losing $1.4 billion, $1 million from SB 1? But somehow we have money now? Is there, I don't know if that's been explained to any of you all, like how that's working or...
Are you, we will not lose, DLGF will not be reducing property taxes in 2026 due to Senate 1.
But that's what was, wasn't that what was said?
In the press conference, yes. But DLGF will not be reducing property taxes in 2026.
That's good, that's good. The other question I had too was, I was looking at...
But, but, just to clarify, they, they will be, I mean, it is coming and it is going to be significant.
Yeah, I think you did your thing.
So we will not be losing money next year due to Senate 1. Heard of the LGF, right?
Well, one of the, with this budget, what's the likelihood that Lit is going to have to increase? Because with the, with this vote, with everything that we're dealing with, with all those tariffs and, you know, the rent increases in food and electricity, especially due to the data centers, all that stuff that's coming and everything is rising. Is this budget impact the likelihood of increasing Lit? I don't know if anybody has the answer to that. Y'all, like, but I'll go on to the one last thing. And that was, I was looking at last year and this year on the Edit Fund and something, the $900,000 got brought up that the mayor's supposedly covering from Edit Fund. What I possibly misreading, and I would like somebody to correct me if I am wrong, but I was looking at, I think it was Form 4, these, so this form like this. And here, in last year, we had, what was it this year? This year, we've got $5.8 million in Edit Fund, if I'm reading that correctly. But last year was about 1.2, we got 4.6 million, which means we're, if I'm reading correctly, the mayor is getting 1.2 million more in Edit Funds than he was, but is only subsidizing the general fund by $900,000. Am I, it seems like if we're struggling to pay for things, that if we've got 1.2 million extra coming in that we didn't have last year, that maybe we put in 1.2 billion because we gave, what, $160,000 from Edit this past year? Something like that?
That's his discretion and I'm very grateful that he is subsidizing. I appreciate that very much, that he is subsidizing.
Oh, yeah. And as you should. All right, but I just, it's one of those things that kind of feels like, "Hey, I'm being magnanimous and giving you $900,000 even though like I just took in $1,200", you know, out of nowhere. And it's discretionary. But I would also like to use this platform here to ask the mayor and all mayors in perpetuity to release a budget for your Edit Funds. Why does that, that plan always seems to go...
He does turn in an Edit Plan in January to the Clerk's Office. So you can request that.
All right, well then I'm wrong for that because I've made mention of that multiple times and nobody's ever once been like, "Hey, that's available", so I'll take that one.
And he may want to answer that question, but I think that's only what you have committed and then there are some blocks of dollars. Is that correct, sir?
Yeah. And that effort here, we're required by statute to submit a budget. We do. Okay, and does that, just out of curiosity, is it, it's like the disbursement, the expenses of that, does that get filed out? Okay. Well, that's cool. Then I will, I will open that, like, because I know I've called for that before and I've never had anybody be like, "Yeah, just go down to the Clerk's Office". I've never had anybody be like, yeah, just go down to the clerk's office sometimes. I was under the impression of, that was it, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm good. I'm fine, thank you.
See, I got, I've got one more question. Well, now you've been up four times, you understand. I just wanted to know, when, when they kept the jobs last year, the mayor brought them back through Edit Funds?
Yes.
So if this wasn't political, and it wasn't suggested by the mayor that that job be cut in Human Rights, would you be bringing that job back through Edit Funds? I'm just curious, maybe. Will that job get them back through Edit Funds like the two last year?
One order, one audience member is not supposed to be asking questions of another audience member.
You'll need to direct a question to us.
No, you just ask the mayor a question and he answers. And you ask a question. Well, y'all can't answer, it's the mayor's going to bring it back through Edit Funds.
Not again, not again, Wayne, I understand what you're asking.
But you see the politics in that? And then we just say we're going to take politics out?
But that would be at the discretion of the mayor, what, how he views to, to, to see Edit Funds.
That, that's, that's the correct answer, but I've been to plenty of city council meetings, and somebody yelled back, and they didn't answer. And now this guy want to say this. Just remember, I'm, hey, maybe I'm doing this for purpose, because I'm going to yell out every time something incorrect goes on, since we set the tone, and I appreciate it. We set the tone tonight, Robert's rule of order. We set the tone. So one time, if I hear anything screamed out back here to the mayor, and he answered a question, you believe I'm going to say something. Because now we set the tone. And I don't want to hear anybody else yelling anything. But I got one more comment to make. We talking about politics, I recall when the mayor was sitting up there on the city council, and the same person was headed to Finance Committee, and, and just for clarification, I, I just want to clarify, I clarified this earlier. And Nora Powell went against her own party on the budget, and it cost her an election. So one thing you got to say, she's fair. So it has nothing to do with politics. So I don't care what y'all say, I was there when it happened, and I remember when that happened. So I appreciate you, and I know you're not playing politics.
Basham?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Powell?
No.
Dishman?
Yes.
McIntosh?
No.
Green?
Yes.
Because we would lose one point six million, I'm going to have to pass this budget. Yes.
Nice.
No.